Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I'll declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the firearms sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency must appoint during council meetings and briefings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the Warrnambool people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Cessnock local government area. Well, now, before we stand for the council prayer, I would like to acknowledge the sudden passing of Mrs Dixie Moores, the wife of Deputy Mayor John Moores, and offer council's condolences to both him and Ryan. If we could please stand for a minute's silence as a mark of respect. Thank you. Now, for the council prayer, do we have here tonight Christopher Hawkins? Is he here? Please come forward, Christopher, to the lectern here to lead us in prayer tonight. Councillors, if we could stand for the prayer.
Microphone is on. Good evening, councillors, Honourable Mayor and citizens. I'd like to thank you very much for the privilege of representing our tradition and the Vedic Hare Krishna tradition and offering the prayer for the welfare of the citizens of our area. So, there is a tradition and a literature called the Bhagavad Gita. And in this famous book of truths which Mahatma Gandhi extolled as a daily prayer meeting, there's a nice verse which recommends, "Yad yada chadati israistas." It says, "Whatever great men do, the leaders, the common people will follow. And whatever standards are set by their example, people will pursue." So, we're asking for the blessings of the Lord, who may be known by many names. We know the Lord in our Vedic tradition as Lord Krishna. And he's the one supreme Lord. And he has many names. You can call Christ, Jehovah, Allah, Yahweh. So many names are there. But the message is the same, that we are... It behooves us to develop the godly qualities. And those godly qualities are primarily to seat at the welfare of all living creatures as God's sons and daughters. So, that is the mandate of... The responsibility of the leaders of the government and the local governance is to see ourselves as the servants of God and to serve the interests in creating a godly community. And then definitely prosperity and peace will be the blessing of the Lord. So, we have one prayer that you've heard us chanting in the streets, I'm sure. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, Krishna Krishna Hari Hari, Hari Rama, Hari Rama, Rama Rama Hari Hari. The prayer translates as a request to the Lord to please make us conscious of our servatorship to the supreme. So, again, my congratulations that this council is recognising the sovereignty of the Lord and creating an opportunity to get the blessings of the Lord to progress. Hari Krishna, thank you very much.
Thank you. In the receipt of apologies and applications for leave of absence, councillor Dunn has been granted a leave of absence from the 3rd of April to the 21st of April inclusive. Councillor Burke has tendered his apologies for tonight's meeting. And councillor Moores has advised that he will be attending the meeting, but he's running late to attend. Has just arrived. Is there someone to move the apologies to be accepted? Councillor Hill seconded councillor Sander. With no debate, all those in favour unanimous. Confirmation of the previous minutes of council. Someone moving that way, councillor Hill? We've just passed, I think councillor Sander put in a leave of absence. Just returned, so councillor Sander is...
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to ask for a leave of absence from May fourteenth to the twenty fourth inclusive. Thank you. I'll be away.
So, leave of absence for councillor Sander from May fourteenth to twenty fourth inclusive. And so that's been moved to acceptance by councillor Hawkins and seconded by councillor Grine. No debate. We'll put that motion, all those in favour, unanimous. Grine. Grine. Moving on to confirmation of the previous minutes. So, move that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. No debate. Move that way, all those in favour. So, councillor Jackson, Moores, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Judd and Saval, those against councillor Olsen. Do carry. Disclosures of interest. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Report CC twenty of twenty twenty-three, the minutes of the Community Engagement Awards and the Grants Committee meeting held. "I, James Hawkins, will declare a non-procurnary interest less than significant conflict for the reasons that one of my children attends one of the schools receiving a grant." Pardon me. "I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting as the conflict does not influence me in carrying out my public duty because I have no role at the school and I'm not a member of this committee." Thank you.
Thank you. And I will declare a interest in report CC twenty twenty twenty-three, Minister of the Community Engagement Awards and Grants Committee. I'll be declaring a non-procurnary interest significant conflict for the reason that my children attend the Cessnock Multi-Purpose Children's Centre and that my wife is also a voluntary board director of the centre. So, I will leave the chamber and not partake in discussion or voting on that item. Petitions, not aware of any petitions. No requests for public address. Consideration and adoption of all reports by inglobo. Someone moving that councillor Hill?
Yes, thank you, Miss Saval. That, having read and considering the reports in the agenda... Sorry. In the agenda related to items PE fourteen twenty twenty-three, planning proposal, reclassify and rezone various lots in Bellburn and Abermain. CC sixteen twenty twenty-three, revised unreasonable customer conduct policy. CC eighteen twenty twenty-three, councillor training and development. CC nineteen twenty twenty-three, resolutions tracking report. CC twenty-two twenty twenty-three, investment report for March twenty twenty-three. And WI fourteen twenty twenty-three, the tender T twenty twenty-three dash ten, Millfield Rural Fire Service Station construction. And that council adopted recommendations as printed for those items.
Okay, are those motions councillor Olsen?
Can we remove CC sixteen from that inglobo, please?
Yeah.
There was a mistake there. Forgot to put it in. Thank you.
Okay. And so, those other items seconded councillor Painter. So, we'll now deal with the list in front of us. All those in favour, it's unanimous. No, sorry, inglobo, notice of intention, NI three twenty twenty-three, moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Debate on that councillor Olsen?
Yes, Mayor. Again, I'd like to state my disappointment. This issue is to be held in confidential session. This is the fifth censure of myself in this short term of council and must be a record for any councillor in the state. And this is why I believe this is to be a form of bullying by individuals who say they are offended by my comments either in open council or on my Facebook page. This is at a cost of approximately $175,000 of rate payers money. And I'm sure if the offender person had to pay their... out of their own pocket, it wouldn't be... there wouldn't be so many complaints. In this term of council, I would think it appropriate that the residents know and understand what I have been accused of and why this money that has been spent is value for money or just a vendetta by those who make the complaints. I have no fear of facing the public with these issues, while others would rather try to discredit me with saying they are offended. Not one complaint has been for telling lies. One individual states they are offended, so I'm censured by the majority who have not complained. And still, I have not had to apologise in open council or remove one post from my Facebook page because of these allegations. This is not being open and transparent by our council. Mayor can do an interview on TV to discredit councillor Judd, and that's okay as far as this council is concerned. While others are censured to silence their comments and any... of any... and any different points of view. If councillors believe this is to be good governance, then I'll feel sorry for those that voted for you. We should be prepared to let the people make judgement on my comments and not hide behind closed doors. We're here to represent the people. And closing a meeting today is that make the effort to attend or watch live at home is a disgrace. I would move an amendment that this issue be debated in open council for transparency.
Firstly, is the amendment... So, is that in an amendment?
Yes, it's amendment there.
So, there's a... My suggestion would be is there's no reason to move an amendment because by not voting for it is the effect of putting it in open council. But if you want to move an amendment...
I'll put an amendment that we have this in open council for transparency.
Yeah. So, I am not able to accept the amendment for the reasons that by debating this in open council would be unlawful under the Code of Meeting Practice, the Code of Conduct procedures and the Act relating to that.
Look, Mayor, the reason...
Sorry, I'm not...
Sorry?
Yeah, I...
I'm just going to...
There's no debate. I can't accept the motion. On...
On the... The motion has been... is for something... I keep getting contradicted on what I say. And it says here that I will be censured, but no... I have got no accountability to anybody because it's hidden behind closed doors. We walk out of here tonight and councillor Olsen's been censured because he's a naughty person. And no one, no one knows what I've done. The only people that knows in here, and we're not allowed to tell the people when we get out of here. I think that it is a kangaroo court that's going to crucify me five times in eighteen months. I must be doing something really bad if I'm going to get crucified five times, yet the local government doesn't do anything about it. So, it should be heard in open council. I said it in... The problems are, all these censures have been said in open council or on my Facebook page, yet I can't... I cannot argue it in an open council to let the people here know what I've done wrong or what I've been accused of doing wrong. So, I'm very disappointed that we're going to hide behind closed doors again.
As I explained, this is a requirement under the Code of Meeting Practice and the required policies and things. There is no decision that we could make that would allow us to do that. These things are in place to also protect the confidentiality related to complainants and anyone involved in the process, which can include... also include staff. So, it's not something that we can do. It's there to... as a thing to protect people as well. Councillor... No, councillor Hawkins has the floor.
Mr Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that these investigations are conducted by an independent third party, completely removed from council, completely removed from Cessnock, completely removed from any perceived or actual bias. Is that correct, General Manager?
Director.
Director, sorry.
Thank you, yes. In accordance with the Code of Conduct, model Code of Conduct and the procedures, all investigations are undertaken by a third party.
So, did councillor Hawkins, do you have any more?
No, I think that clarifies.
All right.
Hey. First question is, why do we use the same company all the time? Surely that would be a conflict at some time?
Thank you. In answer to your question councillor Olsen, we don't use the same company all the time. However, for certain events, they may resurface.
All the investigations are made by... done by the same solicitor, same company. So, I'll challenge you on that one. The next question is then, why is my name on this report on the front page so everyone can see it? And then it gets put in the public that I've been breached the Code of Conduct?
Excuse me. Thank you councillor Olsen. In relation to the advice that we've received from the officer of local government, following an investigation where a matter has been considered, investigated and the investigator has made a recommendation, this is the way that the OLG has advised us that the matters should be presented to the public.
So, you're saying that my name should be on the report on the front page? Is that what the OLG is saying?
That was... Thank you, Miss Saval. Councillor Olsen, that's... My answer was my answer.
Sorry? I couldn't hear that. Too many people talking.
He clarified that, yes, that was his answer.
From the OLG, from the officer of local government.
The local government advised that this is how it should be reported.
By the officer of local government? Is that what you're saying?
That's what the director said.
Is what you said. Does the general manager agree with that? Sorry? Didn't hear you.
Yes.
What did he say? Oh, sorry. I didn't hear him. I just found it strange. I find it strange that...
Hang on. Wait for the general manager's response.
Yeah, through you, Mr Mayor. Yes councillor Olsen, that is my understanding. It is directed from the OLG as to how to present that information.
So, is there any more questions councillor Olsen? It's not... You've already spoken on this item. Councillor Olsen, you don't have the... You don't have the floor councillor Olsen. We'll now deal with this item. All those in favour, councillors Jackson, Moores, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval, those against, councillors Painter, Watten, Olsen and Judd. I'll declare the motion carried. There are no merrill minutes. Motion of urgency, councillor Watten?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. This is in relation to DA eight slash two thousand twenty-two slash one zero four five slash one. And it's with relation to requesting to have this DA relisted. A brief rationale for this is I requested to have this particular DA called up to the next available ordinary council meeting. And then I found out the next day that the matter was approved on the sixteenth of May. So, I'm looking to see if there's any way possible to represent the residents of Middle Street and Brankston concerning this. Yeah, if there's any way that this can be relisted.
I might seek advice from the director on whether this outcome is something that's lawfully possible.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That particular DA has been determined. And so, there is no way that council can reconsider it. The only possibility would be the Land and Environment Court considering it. And that would have to be based on a third party appeal.
So, I can't accept that motion given that it wouldn't be a lawful action of council to relist it.
So, just to confirm, the next step, if residents were concerned, would have to go through, like Land and Environment Court, LEC? Okay.
Director.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, any third party would have to establish that they had standing in the court to be able to take that appeal. And if they were successful in doing that, then it would be up to the court to determine whether they'd hear the matter and then proceed that way. However, based on the information I have, it's unlikely that there's people with third party appeal rights.
Okay.
Thank you. Councillor Olsen, do you have a question?
Just a question on that issue. If a councillor put in a request for it to be brought to a council meeting and then they approve it the next day, why wasn't it held up and brought to the council meeting like the councillor requested?
Director.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The application was actually determined. And then we had some email correspondence that the item would like to be called up. I then had a discussion with councillor Watten advising that the matter had been already determined. And therefore, it was not possible to call it up.
But so you'd already notified the applicant?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, the matter had been determined. My understanding is the applicant had been advised.
That's different to what councillor Watten just said. He said he put it in on the fifteenth and it was determined on the sixteenth. That's different to what councillor Watten said. So, who's...
We're not here to debate the director's responses.
It's an important issue, Mayor, that if a councillor wants something called up and then the planning department goes on and approves it anyway, what are we here for? They're overriding us.
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Just to clarify, to have an item called up, we need advice signed by three councillors. The information that was provided to me on the fifteenth was an inquiry about the possibility of calling up. And it was at that stage that I advised the matter had been determined.
On the fifteenth? It was determined on the fifteenth?
So, councillor Olsen, we're not here to question the director's responses on these. We can't debate the... Councillor Olsen, you don't have the floor. Council cannot debate the responses of the director's meeting. So, under clause nine point one nine of the Code of Meeting, the chairperson must not permit discussion on any reply or refusal to reply to a question put by... to a councillor or councillor employee. They... We're not... We can't debate. The answer is what the director provided. If you have other questions you would like to ask in relation to that matter, I suggest you contact the director through the formal processes. It would be to send an inquiry through to the CAR email. I'm sure you could do that as well councillor Olsen. I asked you what the formal... I answered the question. Moving on, so I'm not able to accept that motion. So, now we'll move on to item number RM one twenty twenty-three. Recision motion, moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. So, speaking on the recision motion, did you want... Sorry councillor Hill moves that way first? So, if you want to speak councillor Hill?
I think I perhaps would prefer to speak on the... if the recision motion is successful, speaking on the moving of the alternate resolution. But it's this recision motion that I have put my name to to call up the recision of this motion at the last meeting is because I'm of the position that the decision I made at the previous council meeting that contributed to this motion, this resolution being passed at the last meeting was a mistake. And I'll talk further on that if the recision is successful and we debate the resolution further.
Okay. All right councillor Judd?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to ask if I can, which I'll probably wait till later now after councillor Hill saying that, what made some of the councillors change their mind and have this DA brought back to council to revote? I ask because I'd like to understand what they see different to me. I see that this report states that we are needing seven car parks and will only have six, which is a variation council says is okay with because they will park on the fresh new cul-de-sac on Evan Street, which will be plenty of room for the garbage truck to turn around. But not then, won't be enough room to have cul-de-sacs at Nalkabar to do the same. So, it's a variation I don't agree with. The report zoning of SP two, that could be wrong due to mapping issues. But if it's not wrong, then this development of double story will be built in the wrong zoning. Is that okay with our council? I found out Cessnock Streak is zoned wrong and a lot of developments there are operating on land that isn't zoned for what they're doing. It seems that zoning matters for a normal resident. But if you're a developer, you can have all of Wallenby Road, for example, changed to suit your DA. The report states that there is not enough open private green space. Again, another variation I don't agree with. They say they can use the park across the road. Maybe the developer should pay to upgrade that. This is an overdevelopment and I cannot support it. Should not have been brought back, even after training with the local government planning guy who I went over this DA with for learning purposes, said to vote the way I feel and that these variations are very much seen as an overdevelopment and you are very much able to vote no on it. I again bring up the Hunter Regional Planning Document twenty forty-one. That seems like we are following. And by twenty forty-one, we will have the thirteen thousand new developments of multi-levels with minimal car parking if this goes through tonight. Watch out as this could be your neighbour's place next. I've put out... put on my planning hat tonight, this is an overdevelopment that has too many variations that I believe is not in the people's best interests. It should not be approved. Thank you.
Councillor Olsen?
I just... I just got a question of councillor Hill. Considering that I wasn't here at the last meeting, but he... I said it in the minutes that he moved it, but I think he only seconded the motion to refuse it. What makes you change your mind from then to within two weeks, from refusal to putting up a motion to approve it?
Councillor Hill?
As I said before, I was going to speak on this a bit further, but I'm happy to answer the question councillor Olsen. The recision motion itself, the decision to move that this be receded was not made two weeks after the last council meeting because I believe there's a particular timeframe in which those have to be lodged. And for me personally, my decision that I believe I made a mistake was pretty much instant after the meeting. Sort of the decision I made in the night at the time, I think, was incorrect. I think that council, the focus of these approvals should be done on the current zoning and the current legislation that applies to that block. I do support that in certain areas, residents... I share this with some residents in Head and Greeter as well, that perhaps they don't agree with what is currently permissible in their zoning. But I think that that should be addressed when council addresses those planning levels and the rezonings, perhaps through the LEP review. So, I look forward to doing a great amount of community consultation when that rezoning occurs. Because if people that live in an area are not happy with the zoning and what could happen, I think they should be putting submissions in. And we should be moving to investigate whether or not that is the appropriate zoning. But for this application, as a... But for this application, as it is now, um, I believe that my, my decision to reject it previously was a mistake and that we should. It should be approved under the current zonings, but I do encourage people to um do as many submissions as they can. And in, be a part of that process when the planning and the zoning um changes. Go ahead.
Okay, councillor Olson.
Just another question of councillor Hill. I'm, I'm a little bit confused here. He spoke at the last meeting to refuse it. He had four weeks, or he had a week to review all the paperwork before the meeting. He didn't support it at all, seconded the motion, voted against it, but instantly knew he was wrong. How, how does councillor make an instant decision at the end of the meeting that he voted wrong? And not go away from the council meeting, think about it at least. How do you do it in instantly at the end of the day?
Councillor Olson, um, I, I, but we're not here to debate the reasons behind why councillor Hill's put. I, I think councillor Hill has answered the question and explained that. I don't know whether there's anything further you'd like to add, councillor Hill? In.
I'm happy to further discuss the item if this rescission is successful and we then debate the issue. I'm happy to debate these questions then with councillor Olson.
So councillor Olson.
I'll, I'll speak against the rescission motion, yeah. I, I just can't understand. How this has come back to us so quickly uh after it was voted down at the last meeting. I was not here for it. Um, and I've looked at what it was for and I understand the residents' concerns about this development. Because if this happens and this is, this is approved, I cannot understand how anyone can say this is allowed to be approved. We've stopped people from subdividing a block of land because of a hundred mil. Yet here we are, o- open space way too small. Oh, we can use a park across the road. Okay, is that going to be pushing them for every other property in Cessnock? Every other property in Curry? You live across from Bart, there are parks in Barton Street, you can go and use them and build your house, cover the whole block of land because this is a park across the road. Is that what we, is councils heading for? What are we looking at? You have got no open space in this place. You haven't got enough parking. They say, it's not allowed to, to uh. Put a cul-de-sac at Nalkabar because a truck won't get around it, but you can do it over here and it's okay to park out the front. They, they, we're hypocrites if we approve this tonight and we rescind this tonight. And we are letting down the residents of South Cessnock if we do, because as soon as this gets built, the house will get built down and I'll build another one beside it. And then there'll be the next house over the road. And do you want it beside you? Why would you want a house that's got four ha, four bedrooms upstairs with four bathrooms? It's not there for a family. It's there for another reason. And that's the problem. And this is a developer from Queensland who doesn't live here, doesn't care about here, he'll make his money and he'll leave. And we're stuck with the results. And the residents live in South Cessnock, Cess, South Cessnock are being let down by this council if we don't support them.
Uh, no further debate. We'll now uh put the uh rescission motion, so. All those in, in favour of the rescission motion. Uh, councillors Jackson, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval, those against. Councillors Moores, Painter, Watten, Olson and Judd, uh, I'll declare it carried. Uh, we're now uh. Moving uh. The motion in relation. To that, um, so moving that councillor Hill, um, seconded councillor Grine. Uh, speaking on that, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mr Savell. Um, I think some of the points I was going to discuss previously have been covered in my response to councillor Olson, but. My um, an additional point that I raised in response to those comments before is that. This allowing of this development is not the setting of a precedent. I, in, in review and as if you, I can't recall my wording exactly, but if I was to go back and watch the discussion at the previous meeting. Um, I think you would find that I was not adamant in my decision at the time, I was hesitant and before making that decision. So it is not a, um, as you say, you know, the, it's not unrealistic that I, um, that had that reconsiderations directly after. But my concern is that council, council shouldn't be addressing and, and allowing these sorts of changes. And, and rejecting these um types of developments on a case by case basis, hence why I refer back to the, the need for. The um community to be involved in the consultation in regards to the zoning. Because we, we, that, that's the reason that that zoning and those planning frameworks are there, to give um developers, including mum and dad developers. The consistency that they know what they can and cannot do on, on their block of land. And if, if every development comes forward to council and is decided on a, on a, on an individual basis, there is no consistency for that. So I think um while I share some concerns that some areas perhaps should not be developed to a certain degree, that needs to be addressed uh in that zoning. And so that is another um point to my, to my decision to rescind that motion and, and my commitment to the original resolution.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Judd.
Um, can I quickly ask a question? If a resident wants to have an area rezoned, can they do that?
Director.
Um, through Mister Mayor, councillor Judd, yes, they can. They need to um submit a planning proposal. Um, generally, they would need to fund that themselves. If it was something that the council was also considering um doing. Uh, then the council may decide to fund it if it's in their um Forward Works Programme. It might take, you know, a couple of years or something like that in, in, in the future. However, as you will be aware, we are currently reviewing the residential component of the local environment plan that's being drafted at the moment. Um, there's going to be some pretty extensive consultation around that one because. The sort of issues that you're discussing tonight are the sort of issues that I think the community are concerned about and want to have a say. Um, but yes, a uh, a, a, a private person can bring forward a request to change zones.
Can, can they change the zoning of the property next door to them?
Um, they would need the um, not necessarily the approval, but the neighbour would need to know about it. And that would be something that council would want to consider.
So how does a resident change the L E P D, like the L E P? So they, they would have to. Because I thought it had to be councillors that would have to do that.
Oh yeah, sorry, it, it's definitely, it's a council decision to make the change. But um, council regularly considers planning proposals that are brought forward by private individuals. Usually it's for a larger. Piece of land, it could be considered for an individual lot. Um, they would submit that as a planning proposal and then the council would um make a decision on that.
Okay, next, next question. See, now I've got, got you. How would a resident like this one in Sixth Street? That come the last meeting, speak his mind and say he doesn't want this next door to him. How would have he been able to change the outcome so the L E P D or the L E P? Would have protected him against this development?
Um, at the time that the L E P was last reviewed, um, that would have been an opportunity for this. Person or any person in the local government area to make.
How long ago was that?
That was two thousand and eleven, it was adopted. Um, so these documents are reviewed probably on about a ten, ten to fifteen year basis. So it is important that they, they, they are right, because they do have to last into the future. And it's also vitally important for certainty, so that anybody who's living in the local government area knows what they are allowed to do. They might not be wanting to develop tomorrow or next year, but they might have plans to do something in five years' time. And they are entitled to certainty as to what they can do and as to what a neighbour can do.
Yeah, okay, so ten years it would have been since it was changed, right? My next question is, um, councillor Hill just said that we should change the L, the resident should change the L E P. If they want to protect them from a development next door. Now, Sixth Street.
Sure that councillor Hill.
Or he did say something about maybe they should look into the L E P D.
So, yeah, so we have a, we have a point of order from, from councillor Hill.
Point of order, Mr Savell. I, my comment would have been that I encourage residents to be involved in the con- consultation process, not that I encourage them to change the L E P.
So, he encouraged people to look at the L E P to protect them for what these developments sort of think. Sorry, that is my words, councillor Hill. But basically, it would protect them from a development like this happening next door to them. Because the L E P would be on their side to say that this is not permissible in the zoning, right? But when you get notification that this is going to be built next door to you, you can't go out and change the L E P. While the development's out. So that cannot protect you unless you are looking at it every day to make sure. That the L E P doesn't change and then a development all of a sudden comes next door to you. So it's a little bit, it's not going to protect a resident. The only thing that can protect the resident. Is when we can come in here and speak on their behalf on what we think an overdevelopment is. And this is an overdevelopment in South Cessnock. Could I quickly ask before I lose the floor, we, we asked councillor Hill why he changed his mind. Um, could I ask councillor Jackson, Jackson, why she changed her mind and what she seen different to what I seen in the report? Thank you.
Uh, so question councillor Jackson, should you wish to answer, um, but.
She doesn't have to answer, she doesn't want to, but just curious.
Um. You don't, you're not obliged to answer questions um from councillors. So, not, not swinging, no, um, okay councillor Judd. That's your, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to see if councillor Jackson's seen something else in the report that I didn't see. That was why I asked. Um, because what I, what I've seen, I don't, doesn't change my mind from the last council meeting, so, thank you.
Councillor Olson.
Yes, yeah, I'm so disappointed for the residents of South Cessnock that they've been let down again. Like, last Wednesday night here at a briefing, we had the director telling us that we're not here to um. Represent the people, we're here to support the planners and what they come up with and what they come to us with is okay.
I think that's a, a misrepresentation of what was.
That's not what you told us last Wednesday night? It's not. Beg pardon? Do you want to apologise? Speaking out?
Um, sorry.
It was, it was what was said. Yeah, go for it.
What about councillor Hawkins?
I feel that's a huge misrepresentation of what the director uh spoke about in that briefing. And I think councillor Olson should withdraw any reference that is not correct as to what we were briefed on.
It's not a point of order.
It is a point of order. What you said was factually incorrect.
You can't call it incorrect.
Councillor, um.
Tell the point of order.
Councillor Hawkins raised a, a point of order, but he has raised the fact that um what you, you said was a, a misrepresentation. Of what the director has said and, and I would think the director confirms that that is a, a misrepresentation.
Uh, yes, Mister Mayor, that is a misrepresentation. Would you like me to um repeat what I said?
Yeah, please.
Briefing?
Yeah.
At the briefing, I said, when it comes to planning matters, the council are in a slightly different position than if they're representing the community. On other matters before council. They have an obligation to comply with the Planning and um Environment Act. And also their own council L E P. So when you are in a quasi judicial situation, when you're considering development applications. And you must apply both the um requirements of the legislation and regulations and also council's L E P. And you must apply those um intended outcomes and rules, et cetera, to the application before you. While you can consider submissions, they are a vital part of any D A application. At the end of the day, you must consider a D A on its merits in relation to those planning documents. Not necessarily council, not necessarily community wishes.
Yeah, well, I do. So councillor Olson, can I ask?
I do remember them.
Can, can, councillor Olson, sorry, will we go back to you? Can I ask that um you maybe withdraw your, your previous comment? So. So I've asked, I've, I've asked you to withdraw the, the comment.
Drawing it, Mayor, because he said at the last meeting, and yous can all argue against me, but he said, we're not here to represent the people when it comes to planning matters. We've got to listen to what the planners tell us. That's what he told us.
Councillor Olson, that's.
That is correct.
Factually incorrect.
If any councillor was here.
Can. So, do you have any further debate?
I have more, because I'm here to represent the people and unfortunately, some people don't see it that way. When we, when we come into this room, if a res, if we don't support the residents, the residents are the ones that vote us in here. Now, there's planning issues here, that planners vary the rules. Planners are no different to lawyers. They have their own opinions of the rules and regulations and they make up a decisions on it. I've seen variations in here where they come to a council with a block of land that's going to be five, nine hundred metres and we ask to make one five hundred and one four hundred. Why would you do that? Yet you make another resident, make sure they have four fifty and four fifty. That's totally inconsistent. And we're always going to be making sure we are consistent. And that's why we're here to represent the people. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm here to represent the people and the people of South Cessnock have said they don't want this development, they don't want to see any more of this type of development. So I will be voting against it because it's an overdevelopment, there's not enough open space, there's not enough car parking. There's not a lot of things about this development that should go ahead. So I'm here for residents, I don't care about what other councillors think. But I know what I heard at the last briefing session. I was here, I listened to it and I heard other councillors sitting here shaking their heads, saying that's, we're here to represent the people. If they didn't hear it, well, that's bad luck, but I heard it.
Councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. I've heard everything that's been said and what's been spoken. Uh, all I do is apologize to South Cessnock and to the resident that owns Sixth Street. That this is about, because it has gone on for a very long time. Uh, but. I am old and wise, but when they come to a stage when we have a vote. And then the following meeting, two people change their vote like that. It just doesn't sit right with me, you know, there's just something not right. How two people can call this back up again and change it. So to South Cessnock, I apologize, but I will vote against this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, um. Look, I uh, I was. I supported this rescission motion um because I originally supported the application. Um, and I, when I did some research, Mister Mayor, and. There's people that have to touch the stove to realise it's hot. You can put a sign on it that says this is hot, you can tell them this is hot. There's people that still want to touch it to realise that it's hot. Um, on the eighth of March last year, we were given a memo to all councillors informing us of a Land and Environment Court decision. Where council had gone against staff's recommendations. The applicant had taken the decision to the Land and Environment Court and it was actually upheld by the Land and Environment Court on appeal. The Land and Environment Court actually reduced the conditions that council staff were recommending to impose on the development. Now, that's something I'm not prepared to gamble with in this instance. The. It's a permissible land use and our planning staff has, have assessed this against our planning instruments. That's what the Land and Environment Court will assess this against, our planning instruments. When we put in place provisions based on local objection and local um situations. Such as bedroom height, uh, window, bedroom window height. Um, the material for glazing to be, to try and minimise the impacts on neighbours. Those sorts of things will be compared to the whole of the state on a New South Wales wide standard, not on our Cessnock standard. So, I'm not prepared to refuse this with the conditions our staff have put in and we. Believe will make it acceptable. Some people will never be happy with what's built next to them. That's just a fact. Now, what I'm also not prepared to gamble with is that it cost us a hundred and seventy two thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and six cents. Plus council staff time in fighting that development in the Land and Environment Court. A hundred and seventy two thousand dollars that we could be spending on our community, on representing our community. That's a lot of footpaths. You can bring in a petition that says I want more footpaths, but if we've spent our money on Land and Environment Court appeals, we haven't got money to respend. You can sit here and say we, we spend money on formal investigations into breaching our code of conduct. That that money would be better spent elsewhere and that would be better spent elsewhere. The solution to that is to not breach the code of conduct. But on this, the development application came in, it was assessed by our staff, it was recommended for approval. We can approve it with conditions that make it acceptable to us.
Was, have you got a, is this a point of order councillor?
We all got the same memo, we should be aware of these sorts of things, councillor Judd.
Not, not a point of order. Councillor Hawkins is explaining.
Mister Mayor, I'll, I'll sum up in saying that I'm prepared to say to the community that we're supposed to be representing. That I can think of better ways to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars than in Land and Environment Court decisions. Over a single property building application that's a permissible land use.
Okay, uh, with no more debate, uh, we'll put the uh item, all those in favour. Uh councillor Jackson, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell, those against. Councillor Moores, Painter, Watten, Olson and Judd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, now moving on to report P E thirteen twenty twenty three. Uh, planning proposal, uh, moving that way, uh councillor Hill seconded councillor Sander. Uh, the debate councillor Judd.
Thank you, ma'am. I read in this report that this is about a D A for a develop- oh, we're talking about developments, getting tongue tied. A dwelling entitlement on a block of land. The zoning of this land is R U two and needs to be a minimum of forty hectares to have a dwelling entitlement. After reading this report, this block of land requesting a dwelling entitlement is only eight point five hectares. So thirty one point five hectares short of the forty hectares. Can I ask the director of planning, what percentage of variation is that, and is that acceptable for our council?
Director.
Uh, thank you, mister mayor, I, I couldn't tell you off the top of the head what percentage that is. Um, wha- what is different about this application is that um the council some time ago um changed its requirements for a dwelling entitlement. And part of that change um that was done, I think about eighteen months ago, uh, meant that despite the um non-compliance with the minimum lot size in this particular case, it did meet some of the other criteria, which meant it was eligible for approval. Um, that is what um staff are recommending. There is still an outstanding objection from one state government agency, so it's not guaranteed that even if council um approved this tonight, whether it would still get approval, because there is that outstanding state government um objection, it now has to go to the Department of Planning for final consideration. Um, but in short, um, sh- sh- short response to your answer is council amended the dwelling entitlement criteria, and this application now meets that criteria.
Was that in the report?
Yes.
Oh, I missed that. Okay, well, would seventy eight point seventy five percent sound about right? Yeah, it's quite a variation. Um, also in this report, there is, is it either one or s- one in six, or there's six parcels of land that are next to it, that I'm sure for it to be mentioned in the report, they'll be seeking a dwelling entitlement too if this one is approved tonight. The information provided, which is what you might have meant here, where you said the merit of the planning proposal has reconsidered in light of an objection from the Department of Primary Industries and is recommended to proceed with the planning proposal. Is that, that the part that you were saying? Yep, okay. Yeah, okay, so seventy eight point fo- seventy eight point seven five percent variation. Yeah, okay, I don't, I don't know if I'm up for that one, thank you.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, mister Savell. Um, just very quickly to touch on councillor Judd's query about um s- s- positioning in the report in regards to some of the planning um changes there. On page sixty six um of the agenda, it discusses the, the part of the comprehensive L E P review where this uh R U two land is currently being reviewed. Um, and the dwelling entitlements on that rural land is one of the issues that are being considered. Um, and in this instance, council was able to um implement an interim guideline. So a, a sort of a holdover, a level of guidelines, which is in the enclosure for this um, for this report, which allows these applications of dwellings to be considered before the L E P um comes into place. So it's sort of like a, it's like a br- a branching sort of guideline to hold over to allow these decisions to be made, which I think is a positive, it's allowing council to um, to consider these types of things with a wider view instead of um having to wait ten years between every single um L E P review, um whilst um still having guidelines to go by and not being ad hoc on a, on a term to term basis. Um, so myself, uh, reading through the report, it, it appears that the um, it mentions that there was no, during the public consultation period, there was no public submissions provided by, say, the neighbours or the members of the community. So that, that sort of gives councillors an idea about um the, the decisions of the, of the neighbours and how they feel about this development going forward, that there was no um objections or, you know, approvals uh from the community. And um the, the applicant has done quite a large amount of work in trying to get this um, get this over the line, so I'll be happy to, to support this resolution tonight.
Councillor Olson.
Just the question on the site uh says that um this, the land is eight point five hectares in area. It is part of a broader landholding incorporating six parcels of land. Um, so how, how big is the whole six parcels of land? Is it owned by one owner?
The. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. Through mister man, I'm sorry, I haven't got that information. Um, and it's not directly relevant to the matter before us.
Sorry, what was that? I didn't hear.
It's not directly relevant to the matter before you.
Uh, but if the, if there's one owner for all the land, there's six blocks. It's not relevant, why not?
Cause we're considering the item that's in front of us.
Okay, well then I'll ask another question then, I'll ask another question. Are the house entitlements, building entitlements on the other six blocks, five blocks?
Director.
I don't have that information, mister mayor.
Okay, well, and I'll move for a deferral of this to get this information. I want to know if the own, if the, if the land is owned by one person for the whole lot, and if there's building entitlements on all blocks, or only this is the first one we're after. I don't know, because it makes a big difference. Because what, what is it set in a precedent, if there's no building entitlements on the other blocks, then he's going to be back with more, and we're going to have to have to change the whole site. So it is very important to getting this right now. So I'll put up a, a, a motion for deferral to bring it back with that information.
So there's a procedural motion to defer um this, uh, is that seconded by councillor Judd? Um, all those in favour of the um deferral of the item? Uh, councillor uh Moores, Watten, Olson, Judd, uh, those against uh councillor Jackson, Grine, Sander, uh, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Savell, I'll declare it lost.
Oh, may I, I.
We'll now move to continue debating, you've spoken on.
I haven't finished, ma'am, I've put up a deferral, so I'll, now I want to speak on this motion that we have here. Uh, how, how can we as councillors, without all the information available to us, when a report comes to council, I'm sure that whoever puts, brings this report to should know this information, we should be able to ask this question. And we should have that information in front of us. How do we make an informed decision? Or do we have to put a decision motion in at the end of the night to get this information for the next meeting? So, or do we just refuse it and knock it on its head now? Because we don't know what's going to happen after this one goes through, if it gets through tonight. We haven't got all the information in front of us, the director doesn't have the answer for us. But, so, so now we have to refuse it, and then we'll put a decision motion in the end of the night. That'll be the easiest way, we'll just put a decision motion in the end of the night. Thank you.
Councillor Olson, can I just remind you um that, that if you don't have the um information that you feel available to make a decision, uh, that you can provide, uh, those questions in writing in advance of the meeting, um, which is covered under clause uh nine point one seven, uh, that says a councillor or council employee to whom a question is put is entitled to be uh given reasonable notice of the question, uh, and in particular sufficient uh notice to enable reference to be made to other persons or to inform. So. Uh, because if you didn't feel that you had the information, uh, I would encourage you in the future to ask those questions in advance of the meeting to ensure that that information can be provided in advance. Um, but. So, um, you've already spoken to us a question. Um, I think you s- spoke in the middle of debate, so there's no, no closing um for that one. Okay, um, we'll put, did, did you want to provide, um, the director?
Um, thank you, mister mayor. Look, I just want to remind the council that you are considering a development uh proposal under the um Planning and Development Act. You are required to consider relevant information, and you are not allowed to consider irrelevant information. So if there was an airport to be built next door next year, it's not a consideration for this matter, it's not relevant. If the landowner decides to come along next week and comply with um.
Sorry, we have a dr- a, a point of order.
We can't be dictated to in a council meeting by a director, telling us what we can and can't do.
The.
We, we run this council, ma'am, it's a point.
That's, that's not a, that's not a point of order councillor Olson, it's not a point of order. The director can continue.
And so if, if this landowner decided to apply for a dwelling entitlement for the next six lots, they would have to be considered on their merits in, in light of the relevant information, and it's not relevant to this matter.
Uh, thank you, director, and I, I would just remind councillors as well that um this isn't the first time that this planning proposal has come through to council. This was dealt with uh several years ago in the, the last term of council, uh, which then was considered, it then went away to be um, to have the policies developed around it. It then came back to council, I believe, then considered around the, the planning proposals. So uh, we're now getting to, to this point, this has come up a number of times before, and this is not the first time this information's been provided uh to councillors. Um, so we're, we're, we're voting, uh, so I've just said we're voting, well, you were on the last term of council as well councillor Olson. Uh, we're now voting on the item, uh, we'll put the item, all those in favour. Uh, councillor Jackson, uh, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, uh, Painter, Savell, those against. Councillor Moores, Watten, Olson and Judd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving on to report P E fifteen twenty twenty three. Uh, moving that way, councillor Hill, uh, seconded on councillor Sander, councillor Hill speaking.
Thank you, mister Savell. Um, I'm voting in support of this recommendation here tonight for the draft chapter for the uh D C P covering the hydro development. Um, this report had a, a good amount of detail in the enclosure in regards to how council is going to apply um or plans to apply um controls to this new development, one of our largest here in the L G A, um, just over the road from, from my hometown there in Head and Greeter. And um, um, I put a number of questions into um planning staff in, in the weeks before, between now and we got the agenda and now, and I was lucky to get a few answers. Um, and I'm happy to receive those few answers from the staff in, um, which sort of bridged the gap in my understanding and the report. And um, something I'd like to just make a query to the director though here now as well. Um, what this, us voting here is for this matter to go on public exhibition. Can the director advise sort of what type of public exhibition we expect to undertake for this? Will there be face to face um sessions where the community can come forward and discuss this matter?
Yeah, um, I'd say to, to the manager. Through you, mister mayor. Generally, when there's a historical um proposal like this, and there's a lot of history behind this D C P and the whole corridor, as everyone knows, we would go out and do broader engagement with the community. Now, what type of engagement we would do is hasn't been determined, but face to face would be considered, and I don't have any problem with saying to council that we would do face to face um engagement with the community as well as socia- um, social media and, and online, um, you know, e- exhibition of the material as well. So there's a whole range of um methods of engagement we'll consider, and we will talk to our um, commu- um, engagement officers to, to um, to provide advice on this as well.
Okay, councillor Hill.
Thank you, um, excellent, thank you for the answer, Martin. I um, I think it's important for the community to be um thoroughly engaged at this stage of the development. This, this D C P draft chapter is the, is a real overarching thing that will, will have an effect on the applications that are inevitably put forward for this um development uh when the, this project moves forward. So I encourage and I will be a part of the, actively be a part of the engagement with the community uh to ensure all the questions are, are answered um for covering this, this draft chapter.
Okay, councillor Judd.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to put a little shout out to the residents to remind them that when these things go out on expedition, it's important to get your submissions in if you want anything to be changed, as they will come back. If there's no relevant submissions, then it will come back and get passed. Um, what I was going to also suggest, as um, I don't know whether or not I should put this as a notice of motion down the track, um, but the council webs- website is um quite difficult. I've heard from a lot of residents that it's quite difficult to use, and I know that the media team have been looking into making it a bit more accessible for everybody as we've chatted about, because I struggle with it being dyslexic, and it's very hard for me to use. Um, so I'm wondering whether or not to make this easier for anyone to go make a submission, if we could actually make a little tab on there, that anything that's going out on expedition could be straight up put on, on the very front um homepage to have submissions. And um it would put everything in one spot to make it a lot easier for any resident to be able to have their say. Um, so I might look into doing that as a notice of motion, because I think that would be great. Um, but just get your submissions in if you are for or against, it's always great to have feedback. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, no further debate, let's put the uh item, all those in favour. Uh, is it unanimous? Yep. Uh, moving on to report P E sixteen twenty twenty three, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Hawkins. Uh, speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, mister Savell. Um, this, this item here up um in front of us this evening is one that uh I personally moved to defer at a previous meeting in, in hopes to get some more information, which I believe this report and my additional questions, which I copied all councillors into to staff this week, I hope have addressed. Um, I had a concern that some parts of this um adopted revised community participation plan may have removed a number of important community notification and consultation matters. But in reviewing the report and in the answer to my questions, um, the, the pu- the purpose of this revision is, is, its real intent is to sort of streamline the real basic complying developments, you know, your mum and dad wants to do a, a small alteration to their block type of D A things that already meet the um zoning and planning and helps them get that across the line faster. I um, I do believe that um we can still do better in the way that we do our engagement, and I, and I'm looking to investigate what, how we can pursue that, perhaps through our um community engagement committee, and with a number of um our community engagement staff becoming more involved in that, and perhaps also involving some more members of the community in that process in future. But um my position uh on this current report item will be to uh support these revised changes.
Yeah, councillor Judd.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, after the briefing the other night, I still left and thought, I don't know why we're even changing this. Um, we sit in here a lot with briefings and all that sort of stuff and be told that our processes for approving D As is quite streamlined, and the ca- council portal for looking for D As is quite great, and everything is amazing, and it's quite easy for the residents to use. Um, so I'm not sure why we need to do this to make it easier uh for the staff, because um, now in it here, it says that we, we are going to change some notify- notifications to some development types. And I, I know um our director did say that these ones are usually ones that would just get approved. But if it's just a simple putting an ad in the advertiser to let residents know um that something's happening, it just saves the whole debacle of residents getting up in arms because information is key. Um, so I just would like to leave it as is, so that every resident has a chance to hear what's going on. Residents don't always have time to try and figure out our council website to know what is happening. Cause like we were just worked out earlier in the night, that an L E P, you know, might change ten years ago, and then something might get developed next door that you can't say no to. So this is just, I'd just like to leave it as it is. Thanks.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, I have to support councillor Judd on this, I, I, we've already reduced notifications to um residents when there's developments going on. And like, we've, we've got this development out at Laguna with this big uh camping site, and a lot of residents out there have got no notification about it. Um, it's found out by social media, by uh people talking about it. And um, and I've had a resident that had to please see why I see build behind him, and he never knew it was going ahead because he never got notified, even though it's right behind him, it's a massive big. because he never got notified, even though it's right behind him and it's a massive big wall. And we've reduced how much notification we give now and this is another step to give less. And all I see is another stepping stone heading towards no notification whatsoever. So, the residents won't really get notified of what's going on. Is it, is it a move towards something bigger than what we really want? Is it, is it, is it anything, is anything we could not be talking about? Because there's a, everyone's heard about these fifteen-minute cities. Maybe this could be part of the plan to get that further down the track that developments happen, like this one in South Cecil, we just approved, that there'll be more of them getting happening and the residents won't get notified because it's a complying development. And then all of a sudden you've got this massive big structure beside you and you say, what the hell? No one told me. And then, and then we got told by the, by the planning advantage about last week that we have to abide by the rules of the planning department and we're not here to represent the residents. And well, I'm, I'm here to represent the residents and I don't think that if someone starts, once someone starts building something, it's too late. We got told that they've got seven days notification when something's going to get built and council will go and investigate it. Well, I put a complaint in about a, a building that was built four years ago and it still hasn't been resolved. So, we're, we're pretty quick on, on actions. So, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned that we, sooner or later we'll be having DA's coming through that no one will know nothing about at all. You'll have places like Mackers getting built or whatever, wherever they want, nuclear power plants maybe beside you. It could be that, who knows? But that's, this is all that's gonna, all these things going, going through my head that if we don't know and we don't notify the residents, each time we take one step away from talking to the residents, we're taking away the residents' power. And I'm, I'm here, I'll stand, stand up and say it every day. Residents come first in this community as far as I'm concerned. And I, and I don't care if I upset the staff because I stand up for a resident, but I'm here to represent them and I always will represent them. And by supporting this, I don't think I'm doing it to justice of what I'm here for.
Councillor Moores.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I think myself, I've read this over, that I think that I'd like to be notified myself if, if something was going on next door to me as much as the residents of this town does, rather than come home from work and find out there's a garage there that's ten foot tall and it wasn't there when you went to work. Because that's what happens, no one's gonna know what's going on if you're not notified. I think it's courtesy of the council to be able to inform the neighbours. It used to be either side and across the road, I don't know what it is now. But if I was either side, surely I would like to know if someone's building something next to me. Thank you.
Councillor Grine.
Thank you, ma'am. Could I just ask the director to just clarify on the seven-day notice that councillor Olson was talking about? Are we then talking about complying developments? And could you just please explain to me again the difference between the two?
Through you, Mr Mayor. The seven-day that councillor Olson was referring to, I think is, there's a requirement to notify your neighbour seven days before construction commences. So, that's usually sometimes, sometime after the approval's actually happened. But there is a requirement to let people know. And just want to pick up on a, a point, you know, the usual run-of-the-mill stuff like sheds and garage and things like this, council may not even know about them either because if they're complying development, we'll only know, you know, when, when they actually go to construct, in which case, you know, it's gonna happen anyway.
So, currently they have the opportunity to go out and not even come through council and get complying development where there's no notification until seven days before construction. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, you are.
Thank you, Director.
No further debate, let's put the item, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell. Those against, councillors Moores, Painter, Watten, Olson and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. Moving on to PE seventeen twenty twenty three. Moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Grine. Any debate on that one? No debate, we'll put that item, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Report CC fifteen twenty twenty three. Moving that way, so moving an alternative motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, yeah, I would. The alternate recommendation that the two organisations, preschool, kindergarten and the Cecil Rifle Club be included in the above table, as they have both provided the information required to get the fifty percent rate notice reduction.
Seconded councillor Hawkins. So, there is an, an alternative one there. So, includes that information.
Yes.
No debate on, on that?
No.
No, we'll now put the, that motion, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Report CC sixteen twenty twenty three. Moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Speaking on that councillor Jurd.
Thank you, ma'am. So, the revised customer care policy, I had a read of this and it seems to me like it's similar to The Voice, should I say that? They're adding race to a policy. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is what it says. Four point three, when customers behave in these ways and where there are not cultural factors that could reasonably explain their behaviour, council considers their conduct to be unreasonable. Unreasonable, yep. The changes to the model policy place an emphasis on cultural factors in order for councils to ensure cultural background is not excluded from the consideration. The revised UCC policy has been updated to include a cultural factor as an additional factor to be considered. Further information about consideration of cultural background can be viewed in the managing UCC manual. How does one know someone's cultural, culture background on a phone call, on an email? Or even if they're submitting something on the website? How would this policy even work without putting staff in a position where they are having to ask residents private information or assuming their cultural background? We all know what happens when we assume something. Thank you.
Is that a statement or? Okay, councillor Olson.
Yeah, I just, a question on that clause four point three. So, when there are no cultural factors that can reasonably explain their behaviour. So, if you're saying if an Aboriginal comes in and abuses someone over the staff, we're not going to act on it? Or is it if someone comes in as Lebanese and abuses the staff, we're not gonna act on it? We're gonna say it's part of their culture?
Question for the director.
Thank you, no councillor Olson, that's totally incorrect.
So, what does it mean? Can you explain that, please?
Director.
Thank you, councillor Olson. As the report clearly outlines, the policy has been reviewed and aligns to the model policy as put out by the New South Wales Ombudsman, which does include a section in relation to cultural backgrounds. It is not about ignoring unreasonable behaviour. It is about making sure that everyone's cognit of the fact that there are different cultural backgrounds throughout all of our LGA and to just to be aware of those in your dealings with all our residents and ratepayers.
So, if, if, if a customer come in of a different race than being an Australian white citizen and was abusive to staff or spoke arrogantly to staff, that could be accepted because they might not be Australian citizens? Is that what we're saying?
I don't believe that's.
But what are we, what are we trying to achieve? I can't understand why we're putting that factor in there. Do you understand, ma'am? Do you understand?
Yes.
Well, can you explain it to me then?
Councillor Olson, sometimes people question things in a certain way and, and a question from some persons, if they may have English as a second language, may be questioning an item in, in a way that they feel like it translates to the English language. That doesn't quite make sense, that might seem offensive and not be meant to be taken as offensive. So, before, this puts in place a policy that takes those things into consideration when the policy is being implemented about whether restrictions are put on to, to people about contact or, or the way they're, they're looked at. This is about going, okay, not everyone has come from the same background and, and understands things the same, same way. We all come from different walks of, of life through, through council and saying that if we are going to take action against someone, we need to consider things. It's not to say because of a culture you cannot take action against someone. It's saying that this may be something that could be considered. So, I believe I do understand it and I believe it's a policy that would make sense.
But from that explanation, ma'am, like, if I was to identify as Aboriginal, would I have consideration in the fact that, how I speak in council that it offends people? Would that make a difference?
I, this is in relation to customer conduct, it's not in regard to.
But it's, okay, I can't use it as a councillor's, I can't use that because I'm a councillor and I'm Aboriginal.
I'm sure if there was a, a reason for your conduct councillor Moores, no, sorry councillor Olson, that it, sorry, I was looking at the screen in front of me.
I'm not that bad looking anyway.
A, a reason for your conduct, I'm sure you would have put that, that reasoning to any investigation and they would take that into consideration for your, your conduct, just as this policy would do for a customer.
Yeah, I just, I just think that this, what we're doing with this policy is making it so broad and open to staff getting, copying abuse and not knowing what, what is what, what they should do and what they shouldn't do. Abuse is abuse or I'll claim myself to be Aboriginal.
Councillor Moores.
Thank you, ma'am. Councillor Olson, I think you're running a fine line here. Way out of line as far as I'm concerned on cultures. It's quite correct for what it's saying and it's not, council is not saying anything about culture, whether it being what country they're from or where they're from. So, I think you're making a very fine line to what you're quoting. You're not reading by this, you're just rambling on to what you want to, people to believe what you're saying. Please stop this, thank you.
No, you've already, that was a statement, it wasn't a question. Councillor Grine has the floor.
Thank you, Mr Savell, I, I find that very, very offensive. There are a lot of cultural differences within our LGA. The fact that you want to, you know, represent Aboriginal people and a lot more, you know, you can't just do that. You can't just sit it in a box and go, there it is. We are all Australian, we don't need that label. So, thank you very much, but no, thank you.
Councillor Jurd, you've already spoken, do you have a question? Question councillor Jurd.
My question is for councillor Moore. Didn't, didn't you just hear that councillor Olson actually read what the rule was, where it said cultural background? And it was the rule? It wasn't him, you, you, you just said something about culture and we're not talking about culture. But the, the question I'm asking, sorry, I'm getting a little bit flustered, but the question is. I didn't call you Hawkins, I called you councillor Moores, yeah.
Councillor Jurd has the floor.
Yes, sorry, but my question is, did you not hear that councillor Olson was actually reading the rule? He wasn't putting culture into this, this is, says culture background in the rule.
So, I, I think the question was about.
I'm just asking if he actually realised that he was reading the rule.
He was reading that, but I think councillor Olson made many other statements other than just reading from the, from the report. But councillor Moores, did you want to respond to that at all?
This is the problem with this.
Councillor Jurd, I did quote what I quoted and I sat here, as many as these people in the auditorium are, and let him listen and listened, I listened, until he virtually got to the stage where he was out of order. It doesn't matter what race it is or who it is and you can't go naming races, you just cannot do these. We are all one, we are Australia. Is that what I think the word says? Thank you.
Hey, councillor Olson, do you have a question?
I have a question, can someone please tell me? Someone says, it says in here, when customers behave in these ways and where there are no cultural factors that could reasonably explain their behaviour. It's in the policy, can someone tell me, am I telling you lies?
I, I don't think anyone had any issues with you reading the policy, I think it was the other.
What other comments, what other comments did I make so bad? Saying any race, it could be any race that comes in here, any race.
Councillor Olson, you asked a question, councillor Painter.
Yeah, just a quick statement, it's not a question. I, I think the policy writes to, to make every effort to understand the customer. If the customer is abusive, well, that's obviously quite obvious. But if we make every effort to try and understand the, the customer, no matter what background they come from, that's how I read it.
Let's put the item, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moores, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Savell. Those against councillors Olson and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. Report number CE seventeen twenty twenty three. We haven't alternative put forward from that, it moved, it's moved by councillor Hill and seconded by councillor Grine. If I, I just made note to councillors, these are changes that were required and, and fixing up some anomalies in the other appointments and conflicting availabilities of councillors, so. So, it's been moved, speaking on that councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Unfortunately, you know, at this time, I'll have to step back from the committees I was a part of, which the ones that I actually agreed to be a part of were the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Olanda Committee and also the Grants Committee. I know I had a brief discussion with you before, but I was never actually officially part of the Roads Review Committee. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's actually noted because I can't resign from something I'm not actually a part of. I don't know.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So, yeah, so we've taken that on notice, I think it was, and, and put through on, on the meeting night and may not have been something that was picked up on. So, procedurally, it had you listed as a member of that committee, but we're fixing that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, it was moved and seconded, no debate. Let's move that way, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Report CC twenty 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 three. On there. Do we, have we, do we do CC eighteen? In Globo, yeah, nineteen, yeah. So, CC twenty 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 three, the minutes of the Community Engagement Rewards Committee. I will vacate the chair and, and over to councillor Moores for this item.
Thank you, need a member in a second. Councillor Hill, councillor Pesa. Debates? No debates? I'll move the motion. Full, all in favour? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you.
Very official, wasn't it? Okay, now moving on to report C C twenty one twenty twenty three. Uh, notes from the Incorporated uh Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander uh Committee. Meeting, uh, moving that way is councillor Grine, seconded councillor Hill. Uh, speaking on that councillor Olson.
Yeah, again, Mayor, this meeting went for an hour and nearly a half. And there wasn't uh enough people at there to attend. They can talk all they want, but they can't bring back meeting notes et cetera because they can't be moved or seconded by anyone in there. They should not be here tonight. They have to have a a quarter or otherwise it doesn't come back to council. I've said it before and I'll say it again. I can't support this because we are not following guidelines and rules for that committee.
Okay, uh, no further debate. We'll put that item, all those in favour. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moores, Grine, uh, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Savell, those against uh councillors Painter, Watten, Olson and Judd. Uh, moving on to report W I. Oh, sorry, C C twenty three, um, sort of in the supplementary agenda. Uh, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Uh, this, the point of order was that councillor.
Friday afternoon. Um, I don't, I haven't had time to actually look at it. I've never seen it before. Um, I think we need to defer this for a fortnight to give councillors a chance to to um read and and check it through because I know there's something like a deficit of four or five million dollars there or something. Um, I haven't had enough time to look at it. Getting it on a Friday afternoon and it's like this is the most important document this council.
So is that, that was a question on it. So I, I need to go to the the mover of the motion to speak first. I thought you were having a a point of order question, so I might, um. Rude councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, uh, in somewhat in response to councillor Olson as well, I I was able to access this document as of Friday. It is, it was quite a short timeframe, however. Um, I understand that many of the changes, especially in the operational plan section of this document, um, are very similar and follow on from a number of briefings we've held within the f- like the past month or so. We had a quite an extensive uh workshop, uh briefing and then um an additional workshop where um our CFO, uh CFO was made available to us to discuss items, line items individually in our um proposed operational plan, changes made to that over the past past thirty or more days. And so, and and in reading this operational plan myself, um, I see many items that I um are familiar with in terms of what was moved, what was discussed at those briefings. Um, even an individual few items that councillor Judd and I were insured were included in a a motion in regards to Sandy Creek Road and Deacon Street um previously. So um I do believe that we've had, we have had quite an amount of time to undertake some of these uh reviews and changes to this documentation. I also note that I believe this um item we are moving is for this documentation to be placed on public exhibition, um, and so I would encourage that if we are too successful in moving this resolution tonight, that the community and or councillors are involved in in extensively in the um community consultation on this, uh, these items.
Okay, uh, councillor Painter.
Yeah, just have the same concern as um um councillor Olson, just short notice and not enough time to review the um the um material and um I would like to defer it for seven or fourteen days to just give us a bit more time to to digest it.
Um, to, to. Yeah. Um, councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to uh ask for a defer on this. Uh, I haven't had my head around it. Uh, I've had a lot going on in my family, uh, but uh I'd like you to come back at the next meeting.
Can, can I just on on that point, just clarify to councillors and and councillor Hill made the the point, um. This is a, has legislative requirements that it goes out on exhibition for twenty eight days and it needs to be adopted prior to the end of the financial year. Um, so we're, we have a timeline of how we need to meet that. Um, this, these documents, we're not asking council to adopt any of these documents at the moment. Um, what we're saying is put it out on exhibition um for the community to look at. And if councillors want more time to look at it and to ask questions as well, they can ask all of those questions during that same time that the community is. So then it will be coming back. So councillors will get a second look at these and be able to make any changes they want to make to it. Um, at, prior to it being adopted. So we're not asking that this document be adopted tonight. Um, as councillor Hill mentioned, this is, um, we were briefed and and we've had lots of discussions around um where this was heading. So I think um the only options would be is if this is deferred is for us to call an extraordinary council meeting um to to then bring everyone back to to deal with this, when I think if councils are uh wanting more time to consider it, what I'm saying is they will have plenty of time to consider this before they have to make a decision while it's on public exhibition. Um, and I'm sure council staff will be available to meet with any councillors that that want um, want time to to do that, so. Um. If, if councillors are 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 wanting to resolve to do um, to extend this, then um then I'll be required to to call an extraordinary meeting, um, which I I believe in, on something like this is unnecessary. Um, so councillor Olson.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, I I I support deferring it for two weeks. I think that uh, we have to make informed decisions and this, like we said, come to us on Friday afternoon and um councillor Painter never got home from holidays until Tuesday, um, hasn't had a chance to read it. How do we say we're making informed decisions on what we're putting out? Yes, we get an opportunity to talk about it again. But what we put out to display to the general public is what this council wants to do. And they believe that's what we want to do. If we get it back in four weeks' time at the next meeting, oh, happy the next meeting, the one after will be in June, then we'll find out that and we start making changes. People will say, well, hang on, you didn't know that, we didn't know that, this. We need to make sure we are making informed decisions. It's like we had a recession motion tonight because the councillor said he didn't have all the information or wasn't sure of the information, wasn't sure of his decision. So we don't want that to happen here. We want to make sure what we're putting on display is what this council wants. It is, as I said earlier, it is the most important issue we have with this council, is our budget. I don't, I'm not actually sure how much deficit is on that budget, but I think, I think I seen it was somewhere like four, four and a half million, maybe five million. I don't know to be sure because I never had a chance to read it. I have a life outside council and I know everyone else does, and we're entitled to have a life outside a council. We can't live by this council and just be, that's all we do. So I think a defer all for two weeks is perfect. We come back for a special meeting, just to knock it on the head and get it out there. It can go on display the following day and it's out there and we get it back for the twenty, the meeting in June to be approved, to be ready for the start of the next financial year. We have plenty of time and there's no reason why we can't come back for a special meeting. We've done it when we were selling land. We done it for, when there was a recession motion on selling the vineyard grove. We come back for a special meeting just for that. We can do it for the most important document we've got for this council to deliberate on this financial year.
Councillor Judd.
Just a quick question. If this doesn't get deferred and it goes to a vote as is, how do you vote? Can you, would I have to vote no because I haven't had a chance to read the document? Okay, so that would be what I'd have to vote. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, in moving, it's the thing, um, councillor Painter, will you?
Yeah, can I just put up a, um, motion to defer it for seven days? And then have a, an extraordinary council meeting um called either that day or the week after, um, after you guys just um procedural motion, um, off the councillors to, um, councillors to to consider.
So. So, um, so you're wanting to defer it for.
Seven days.
Seven days.
Yeah.
So procedural motion to defer the item for seven days, um. Oh, I, I, so, um, there's, yeah. Um, reminder to councillors, there's also a public holiday next week, um, in considering things as well, not on Wednesday, but um, on on Tuesday for Anzac Day.
Tuesday, isn't it?
Um, as, as I said before, um, I, I think this is unnecessary and will be an ex- additional expense to council. Um, but should councillors wish to go that way, then um, that's up to them. Is that motion seconded? Uh, seconded by councillor Moores. Um.
Yeah, you did.
Uh, so we'll put the deferral motion, all those in favour of the deferral. Uh, councillor Moores, uh. So Moores, Painter, uh, Hawkins, which, so Moores, Painter, Watten, Olson and Judd. So this is. Yeah, so, so it was clarified Moores, Painter, Watten, Olson and Judd. Uh, those against was councillors Jackson, Grine, uh, Sander, Hill and you're required to Hawkins is um and Savell, uh, so that's lost. We'll now go back to the original motion. Um, all those in favour of of putting them. Um, we haven't put the original motion, so, yeah. Yep.
Briefing be held for councillors?
Um, prior to it return, so.
Let's go with on that seventh day.
So the briefing be held for councillors prior to the.
During the exhibition period.
During the exhibition period, but or at the completion of the exit.
The next available briefing. There we go. Thank you, councillor Watten.
Yeah, um, the briefing be held for councillors next available briefing. Um. So, um, so that would come in just to to clarify for councillors. Um, we may be able to to get at that briefing, the community feedback on that as well. Um, depending on when it's held or or some release some initial feedback, so, um. The, so moving that way, um, was councillor Hill and seconded councillor Sander. Do you accept that additional?
Yeah.
Dot point?
Yeah.
Yes, um, so that's, yeah, now becomes part of the motion.
Thank you.
Um, so we'll now put the the item, all those in favour. That, uh, councillors, uh, Jackson, Moores, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Savell, those against, uh, councillors Olson and Judd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, now moving to report W I ten twenty twenty three. Uh, move that way, councillor Hill, seconded, um, councillor Grine. Any debate? W I ten twenty twenty three, the minutes of the uh Roads Review Committee. That, there's no debate. I'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, W I eleven twenty twenty three, uh, minutes of the local traffic committee. Um, moving that way was councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Uh, speaking on that, councillor Judd.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to ask why the air show that was on the twenty sixth of March is at this council meeting, the nineteenth of April. Do we not, for the concerts a few months back, have to do a short notice extraordinary meeting to approve the traffic plans for the event of the concerts? Just wondering why in this case, the air show, we haven't got the traffic plans for the event until now and it's about three wait, three weeks late?
Um, do you, the director.
Was it?
Um, thank you, Mayor Savell. Councillor Judd, um, you may remember that council considered a a report, a meeting, um, prior to the traffic committee meeting. And council endorsed in principle, the in principle support of the traffic committee in anticipation of that traffic committee meeting being held on the twentieth. So council ought to resolve, subject to the traffic committee being happy with the um information supplied, that they was provided support for the air show. Um, that was subsequently held. And I think the, there was a memo went out to councillors advising that that was upheld. The air show was held and these are the minutes of that meeting, which incorporated the air show.
Okay. Why's it, why's it now come back now again though?
Um, because the, the meeting was held on the twentieth and this is the next council meeting. And so we predetermined like our, our support for that um item, but it was still discussed in the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So therefore it becomes part of those meeting minutes and the meeting minutes are what's come to us, not the actual decision.
Do that in the future for any ca- um concert instead of having to do an extraordinary meeting? If that happens.
If it council, I I don't know, but I I would imagine that um, the preference would be that it doesn't go that way because it wasn't the ideal scenario of how things should be handled, um, but we made, had to make do at the time. Um, so it's, the preference would be that things go to the traffic committee first and then council can determine, but in the the timeframe we had, council um had to provide its in principle support to the traffic committee.
Right, so we did this one a little backwards.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, councillor Hawkins.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. I'd just like to draw the councillor's attention to T C eleven of twenty twenty three, the item there. Uh, Yango Street, Cessnock Regulatory Parking Controls. Um, it, it sounds fairly simple, but this, um, this is the regulatory approval for twenty two additional car parking spaces at the Bridges Hill Park. Um, it's been incorporated in part of the Shared Pathway Programme. And I think it's a a great example of where staff have been able to identify a piece of infrastructure that we can put in place to improve parking. It's a, a a common complaint that we don't have enough of it in our C B D. Um, and and here we are, we've found space for twenty two additional car parks. Um, I know anyone that's been to the um, the club near or the church near for any significant functions, they'll be pretty happy to have twenty two additional car parks that are accessible by our, our new shared pathway. So I think it's just a, a great thing and that the staff should be commended on that.
Uh, we now put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, W I twelve twenty twenty three, uh, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Hawkins. Um, speaking on, on that councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, I'm quite glad to see the, the approach that council has taken in regards to the tender and the um, the approach to this, to this project, um. A number of projects and uh past projects that you may have seen around the L G A. Residents in the community will sometimes come up to us afterwards and say, why didn't you go the extra hundred metres down the road and do the extra bit of work or do the extra bit of footpath or something like that. And um, and this um, plan here from our view road is exactly what we've done from this stage. We, we've, we're pushing to do a fuller uh amount of the project all at once here, so that while we've got the, the crews and the contractors there on the ground, we're going the extra mile. Um, it, it will cost us extra money, but I, I can't imagine there's much else on uh councils uh works, plans that us councillors would agree on more, uh, that would be more deserving of extra money than our, than rehabilitation of our roads. And so I'm, I'm really glad to see uh this action and this, this um plan going forward and I'm happy to uh support this recommendation.
Okay, councillor Olson.
Yeah, can I just get clarification, Mayor, how, what, what part of Mount Viroe we're doing, how far? Where from and where to?
The director of food, so being referred to the management infrastructure.
Uh, yeah, through you, Mister Mayor. Um, the initial stage of the project was quite short. Um, but I don't have the exact uh location of the project that is included in the report. Um, but that information's available on the website.
Yep, I, we have any rough ideas what we, what we're approving here?
Three point eight million dollars worth of upgrades to Mount Viroe.
From where? Barrett Avenue? That's it. The rest of Mount Viroe is not getting done. So we're spending four million dollars on, from Barrett Avenue to the Links Avenue, which would be five hundred metres? Something like that, something like that, yeah. Uh, I, I'm a bit disappointed with this because, um, there's a lot more. There's a lot more of Mount View Road that needs repairing, um. I, 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 I just, I suppose another question I would, I, I'd have to ask, we deferred this road many, 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 many times. Mayor, as you remember, you were, you were the main man that kept deferring it, um. How much have we spent in the last five years maintaining this road? Would anyone know their answer to that? Probably not, not on the, off the top of your head, no. No, but we've probably spent half a million dollars trying to keep the road together while we deferred and deferred and deferred and deferred. Now, we're looking at doing only from Barrett Avenue to Lynx, what happens to the rest of Mount View Road which has fallen apart? What do I go tell the residents that ask me, why aren't you doing my end? Uh, why are we only doing from Barrett, why aren't we doing from Mount View, why aren't we doing from the, from, uh, Wallonby Road? Why aren't we doing from there right through and, and keep working out? Like, I know it's a lot of money, but this is the busiest road, it's local road in Cessnock. And if you're, if you're a Ward A and Ward B representative, you should be really concerned here, because this is the most important road of Ward A and Ward B. That gets you so much besides Wallonby Road, al- once you get off Wallonby Road, it is busy. We've got the school, we've got, we've got the showground, we've got the sports ground, we've got all the developments, Vineyard Grove and the vines. We've got all that out that way and then when you go right through to the vineyards and we're only doing from Barrett Avenue to Lynx, so to get Barrett Avenue. You come from Mount View Road down to there and you're gonna bounce, 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 oh, good, great, let me go back to bouncing again. So, I, I, I'm a bit disappointed that we're only doing that small section, I'm, I'm fantastic news that we're gonna get some of it done. But we're, we're, we're pushing two point six million dollars back into the next budget, which means. Works we had planned for next year is getting pushed back further and further and further, so that two point six million dollars. What we're gonna do next year will become three point something million the year after, and it just goes on and on and on. Nothing ever seems to improve on how we get our roads done. And how much time it takes to do our roads and then they fall apart. I haven't heard anyone tell me how we're gonna improve what we do in the last eighteen months of this council. Um, I'm disappointed with that, uh, I haven't seen any improvements on how we fill potholes, I haven't seen any improvements on how we do anything. On the works, in the works department at this point in time, I'm ecstatic that we're getting something done. But I feel sorry for the rest of the people that have to drive all the way down Wallonby Road and find out that there, the rest of the road is falling apart. And if you, anyone, anyone, please go and have a look at it, it is a disgrace, there's so much traffic on it, it's an absolute disgrace. Anyway, I'll support the motion.
Um, thank you councillor Olsen, and just to, to clarify, um, on page one forty three. The, um, the, the scope refers to approximately nine hundred and fifty metres.
Nine fifty metres.
In the middle of there. So, um, councillor Hawkins.
Mr. Mayor, I've not heard so much negativity from one person, I was wondering how to put anything other than a positive slant. On this section of Mount View Road being upgraded, um, here we are, you can scream all you want that there's a problem, you can scream that it needs fixing. Here we're going to fix nine hundred and fifty metres of it, the section of Barrett Avenue, that's the part everybody from Bellbird drives on to get to Mount View High School. Do you know where Barrett Avenue is? This includes safety upgrades for that road, it upgrades crossing points for the children getting to and from school. I can't believe you would be so negative about this, I'd like to commend the staff for these sorts of projects, um. We've got to take a step in the right direction and I'm certainly sure this is a step in the right direction. I can't believe anybody would be other than positive about this, but hey, I might be a little bit different. I've actually listened to where we're being told, it's a matter to say I've not been told, I've listened, I haven't heard, I've listened. To being told how we're improving our procedures and how we're getting these sorts of projects delivered. Anybody that's been through Weston will see that, anybody that's been through Curry will see that, now we're gonna have something in Mount View Road where we can say. This is how we're improving the lives of our people, it's just got me, it's got me baffled as to how you can continually put a negative slant on something. That is such a positive for our community.
No further debate, let's put the item, all those in favour, uh, it's unanimous. Uh, WI thirteen twenty twenty three, uh, moving that way, councillors Sander, seconded councillor Hill. Uh, no debate, let's put the item, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Uh, moving to WI fifteen twenty twenty three, uh, move that way councillor Moors. Uh, seconded councillor Hawkins, uh, speaking on that, councillor Moors, do you wanna speak on the?
This is on Millfield?
Uh, no, this is on WI fifteen, so this is the BMX track.
Oh, sorry, 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 I was, I was reading off the, off the screen. Uh, the BMX track, uh, is for the naming, uh. I've, I've, it's been a passion of mine, this, I've sent thirty odd emails off to Cambera, back to Cambera, back here. Council's done very well to support me, showing the guidelines, which way to do it, the best way to do it. Uh, cause naming, uh, anything after anybody is a very, very hard thing to do. Uh, but it just shows you it can be done if you persevere, uh, Neville Tomlinson was the, uh. Was a person who worked seven hours down the mine, came out the mine, was a captain of the fire brigade, volunteer at Bellbird. And also then went over, his sons took up, uh, BMX and, uh. He built a couple of jumps for him and then the young kids came and said to him, can we use your jumps? And he goes, yeah, certainly, he said, would you like me to build you a track in Jess and they said, yes. So, how then came the BMX track at Bellbird was Neville had got to work, come back, work on the track. Uh, and if there's no fires, he worked there many five, six hours a day. Uh, there was then a BMX track at Bellbird which kept the kids off the street, uh. It then came very, very popular, uh, and opened up as a club and it was registered as a club. Uh, Neville Tomlinson, uh, was the only life member of this club. Uh, how I can tell you this story and how I know this story is, I was the president at the time. When Neville was, uh, made a life member and he put all his, uh, he lived and breathed the track. And I think it's only fair, uh, for Neville, uh, to name this after him. Uh, his family is, uh, been very, very pleased in this, uh, Neville has passed away since. But, uh, I'd like to say thank you very much for everybody that has helped me along the way, thank you.
Councillor Painter.
Yeah, just quickly, I'd like to acknowledge the work that John's done, you know, I'm getting the, um, naming of this up and the manner correspondence and the work that he's done. So, well done, John.
Yes, yeah, I'd also like to acknowledge that this has come through the work of councillor Moors, so. Thank you for putting in that, uh, that time and effort.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna echo, um, councillor Moors, there's no more fitting reason to name a piece of our city's infrastructure after someone. Than the valuable contributions that they make towards it, um, these sorts of naming things, they don't, they don't come along without a lot of research and a lot of work. And, and for these reasons, these are what we tell our children when they ask, why is it named like this? So that we can continue the story and be able to tell our children, this is what this person did for our city and they can be as proud as we are of the contribution. So I think this is a great, a great piece of recognition for someone who put a lot of work into our community.
Yeah, no further debate, let's put the, uh, item, all those in favour, uh, it's unanimous. Uh, report BN seven twenty twenty three, uh, councillor Olsen.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mayor, the motion reads, um, the council investigate the possibility of creating a coal miner's memorial walk. On Maitland Road between Duffy Drive and East Cessnock School, uh, the work should include a large sign similar to. Alunias Meldron Hart Road to show the start of a memorial walk when entering Cessnock from Neath. Parks and stories of those that have lost their lives in the industry and history of our heritage in the coal mining industry, um.
Uh, so is the motion seconding the councillor Jurd?
There, 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 there is, I, I was requested by a, a few coal miners about this, about our heritage of, um, Cessnock. And, um, I think thi- this is something that we have to remember what Cessnock started, built its back on was the coal. And, uh, we've gotten, what we have of coal mines left now is very minor, um, but we have to remember those that lost their lives as well. Uh, there was the Bellbird Mining Disaster back in the, in the twenties and, and I, I lost a, a grandfather in one of the mines. I've lost a lot of friends in mines around, around the area over the years and I'm sure everyone sitting here would be able to tell you a story about something like that. So we have to remember this type of stuff and I think it's very important, I, I have had discussions with councillor Hill about this and he's, he's talked about. Making the walk to come from, um, Abermain to where the, um. Uh, the school, old school of ours building is where they have the, um, Endeavour, whatever the, Edgeworth, Edgeworth David. Um, all that's, all their coal mining stuff is in there, so I, I, I would, I would like to change it from, um. From Duffy Drive to, to go to Abermain, we need a connection between Cessnock and Curry as a shared pathway, we haven't got that at this moment. I don't wanna come down Duffy's Drive like it's been recommended by staff in there, I think this isn't too important for, to put it down a side street. We need to keep it on the main road and we need to make it sure it's respectful for the, for the community. And the people that wanna walk along there and take their time and read and remember what these coal miners went through and, and who lost their lives in these coal mines. At, at, at the moment, anyone that walks along or rides a push bike along Maitland Road towards Neath, there is no pathway for them. There is a, a, a edge of a shoulder to ride a push bike on, but, uh, it is dangerous, um. Trust me, I've rode along there in trucks, don't miss you by much, uh, so I, I think it's important, uh, and I think it'll work. Best if we go along Maitland Road and take it all the way for Abermain, uh, and if we wanted to continue later on in, in, down all the way to Curry. Uh, that's fine as well, because the whole community, the whole LGA is built on coal and the vines come after. Uh, so we have to remember that and I think it's, that is important to the people of Cessnock and I think it's important to, especially the coal miners of, of our community.
Um, so just to clarify the amendments, I think councillor Hill had some suggestions around it. Did you wanna hear what he's said and then make some, some things, so I might throw to, to councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell, I apologize that I haven't prepared anything in writing, but, but my amendment should only be reasonably minor. Um, perhaps the, the wording that's the council investigate the possibility of creating a coal miner's memorial walk, um. On, on Maitland Road between, um, like, we'll keep it at Duffy Drive and, um.
So I think the suggestion would be on, on, um, coal miners' walk between Cessnock and Abermain.
Yep, Cessnock and Abermain, that sounds good, and if it could, if it could also, um, and if that investigation could also consider some. Um, negotiation and consultation with the Sir Edgeworth David, uh, museum in Abermain. Um, and perhaps additionally the mining and energy union, because I believe both of those organizations. Would have quite a large amount of, uh, history in the mining history, mining industry in our region, I've only recently been dealing quite closely with the Edgeworth David Museum. Um, and I think bringing on board those two organizations to, um, perhaps provide information and history that could be contributed to this walk. Would be fantastic for our, for this, for this.
So you're, so to clarify, so you're, you're happy with them or just get it in the wording?
Yep, yep, yep.
The, the general manager investigate, um, and then if we can go, um, in that same line, re- make it say Maitland Road. Uh, between Cessnock, sorry, we remove Maitland Road, we just say walk, um, between, uh, Cessnock. And Abermain.
Yep.
Walk, um, between Cessnock and Abermain, um, and then at the end, we have the sentence that says council. Um, that consultation, so another sentence, yeah, uh. Yep, um, uh, the walk should include, and then you could say, yeah, consultation, uh, with. The Sir Edwood, Edgeworth David, yeah, S I R, yep, Edgeworth. E D G E W I R T S, David, uh, um, memorial. Museum. And the mining and energy union. Mining and Energy Union, I think they're called now, MEU, mine, yes, the Mining and Energy Union. Yep, yeah. Um, uh, yeah, I think they're all capitals, capital M E and U, um, and, um. Then a final sentence, but not a dot point. So, not a dot point final sentence that a report be returned to council. Comfortable with that, so move is comfortable, second is comfortable, it now becomes the motion, um. So further discussion, do you, you don't want any more discussion, so councillor Jurd.
I just wanted to quickly state, um, I really would like it not to be on Duffy's Drive, just. I don't know if we should add it on to the report or whatnot, but just to remember Duffy's Drive has had a lot more actual accidents on there. Where people have been killed, so if we had a walk, walkway right next to the road there, there might be. A chance for a pedestrian to be injured, so, um, Maitland Road would be, unless there's more accidents on Maitland Road. But I don't know of anyone that's been killed on Maitland Road, where I know two on Duffy's, so.
Yeah, and, um, and I'll, just for, for clarity to people that may not be aware, council has, um, previously received grant funding. To allow us to undertake the planning and consultation, um, works for this pathway. I think they had estimated it just under ten kilometers worth of pathway, um, so I'm sure that will be happening, um, in the near future. Uh, councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor, it would be a lot more, uh, let me just say first, uh, councillor Olsen, that is one of the best speeches I've ever just say in a long, long time. Thank you, uh, coming along, uh, the mad mile would be the proper way to come. Because obviously, uh, Duffy Drive, you're going away from the township and you. By coming up Maitland Road, you're heading into the township, which is not the, we call it now the Hunter, it was the Coalfields. And this is where the coal mining was and coming along Maitland Road, you will come past Aberdeen North Colry that used to be on that main road. Thank you.
So, thank you councillors, um, for that and, and I do believe it is the one hundredth anniversary this year of the, um. Bellbird, um, mining disaster, um, later in this year, so, I'm, I'm sure there'll be, um, commemorations around that and. And, um, and as we know, the, um, Mining G Energy Union, um, hold, uh, uh, very solemn ceremony. Every year at the Jim Cumberford Memorial Wall, um, uh, acknowledging the passing of, um, people. Uh, from our mining industry, um, so, uh, with no further debate on that, I'll, I'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous, uh, councillor, um, reports, I'll call councillor Hawkins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just a quick, a quick council report, um, it, it's, it's lovely to be able to report back. Um, on the conclusion of the Blaze Aid Camp at Cessnock, um, it was situated at Crawfordville Park. Um, I'll just read some of the statistics that were sent to me, um, there were forty six volunteers at the camp. Uh, that was set up in Millfield at Crawfordville Park, uh, Max and Judy Robins were the coordinators of that camp, they've done a fantastic job. Um, they were joined on the thirtieth of March, yourself and I had the, the, the pleasure of, of joining them. Uh, there were thirty eight registered properties, they completed thirty four of those properties, um. Four were unable to be completed due to the property owners were unable to supply the materials or access, couldn't be, uh, restored. Uh, they completed four hundred and thirty six days cumulative workdays, replacing thirteen point six five kilometers of fencing. They cleared eleven point six four kilometers of damaged fencing, erecting three hundred and twenty six quarter split posts. Uh, which anyone who's done any fencing knows, there's a lot more star pickets between, between wooden posts, um, I, I, I'm assuming they would have lost count. Um, they put in various strainers, uh, hanging old gates, new gates, there were creek crossings that were redesigned and secured. Uh, post and rail fencing, they assisted farmers, primary producers, vineyards, hobby farms, standard household properties. Many with aging property owners of failing health, uh, the longest time on any job was eight days. Um, the average age, Mr. Mayor, which I will say, you and I significantly reduced the day we, we joined them. Um, it was sixty nine years of age, um, which pure displays that these are retired people that, uh, just love getting out and helping communities. Um, and I, I think we as a council should be very grateful, cause I know that the community, the. Um, and I, I think we as a council should be very grateful because I know that the community that they helped were very grateful. Um, I'd like special thanks to go to Max and Judy Robins that were the camp coordinators. Um, and they've sent their, um, thanks to Cesnock City Council for organising the infrastructure that enabled the volunteers to be comfortable while staying at the camp. Um, that included amenities as well as just maintenance of the park in the, the eight weeks that they were there. Um, particular thanks goes to Melissa Boucher, who's Cesnock Council's Community Recovery Officer. Um, Melissa worked tirelessly to bring Blaze Aid to Cesnock, uh, coordinating the property owners to register for existence, overseeing the camp. Uh, she assisted duty for the duration of the camp and, uh, she's continuing to assist them in finding a suitable permanent hub for Blaze Aid in the Hunter. Um, Mr. Mayor, you'll remember we discussed out there, um, that Blaze Aid have over two hundred trailers now full of fencing equipment to be able to go all over the state to help repair when natural disasters hit an area. Um, and they're looking for somewhere in the Hunter to store their gear because no doubt we'll, um, we'll be hit by another disaster and we'll, we'll need their help. So it would be lovely to be able to find somewhere close by for them. Um, Kylie Wallace is the Singleton Council, I'm not sure of her position, but she liaised with, um, Melissa Boucher from the Singleton End to coordinate the people in the, the Broke and the other side of, uh, Paints Crossing that were, um, that were affected. The Millfield Hall Committee created a special thanks. Linda Nain is the, the hall manager out there. Linda does a fantastic job for the community out there. She was particularly helpful to, um, to, to duty, uh, with social media awareness to the local community donations. She even organised a freezer for the camp. Um, the local community services that were involved, the Red Cross, Cesnock Men's Shed, Rotary Cesnock, Rotary Maitland and Raymond Terrace, the Paxton Veggie Hub, and there were many more that, um, donated their time and their services. Um, we need to thank Blaze Aid's C A O, Melissa Jones, and also Debbie Butler from Blaze Aid's head office for their continued support. Um, I'd probably like to conclude by just reiterating that Blaze Aid are a team of dedicated volunteers who give their time and expertise to assist communities affected by natural disasters, bushfires, floods and droughts. We at Cesnock City Council wish to express our sincere thanks to everyone involved in the Millfield Camp of twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hawkins and, um, I'd just like to echo your, uh, comments on that and, and support for Blaze Aid and thank them for, for hosting us and, and a day out there where we assisted in, in, um, their endeavours and, um, they do amazing work, um, and have really assisted the, the landholders in, uh, in our community. Uh, we now, uh, have a motion to, um, move into the, uh, confidential session of, of council. It's moved councillor Hill, seconded councillor Grine. Um, all those in favour of that? It's, uh, councillor Jackson Moors, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Savell, those against, uh, councillors Olson and Jurd. Um, I'll declare it carried. Um, we're now, um, ask the gallery.